I would like to call to order the National Board of Education Budget Committee meeting for Wednesday, February 17th, 2021 at 6:06 PM. I want to thank Board President Heather Raymond for appointing me Chair, and I want to thank my fellow Board members for approving that appointment. I'm going to ask Ms. Bishop if she would please take the role.
Ms. Bishop is here. Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Odin?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Guarino?
Here.
Ms. Zim?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum, and I think everyone's here. Before I... Tonight, we're going to have a presentation from Administration, but before I do that, I have an opening statement. It's only about three minutes long or so, so I hope that you will bear with me. Our school district budget is a statement about our priorities as a Board of Education and is a reflection of our moral imperatives. Our public school budget is a moral document. A Nashua school district is facing a number of crises. First and foremost, on everyone's mind is the COVID pandemic crisis. Our next crisis, in fact, we are already experiencing this, is the psychological, social, and emotional toll that dealing with this pandemic is taking on our students and families, as well as our staff. But there is a third crisis that is just on the horizon for our district and for public school education in New Hampshire, and that is a financial crisis for our public schools. Our state government is unfortunately shifting more and more of the financial burden onto the homeowner. Things are made worse by defunding and disinvesting in our public schools and diverting funds to charters and private schools through vouchers. Proponents say that this helps disadvantaged students, but when it comes to providing equal opportunity in special education, our public schools in New Hampshire do all the hard work. So I think we're at a moral crossroads in New Hampshire, where we need to decide whether or not we want to continue to pay to educate our kids and our neighbors' kids, especially at a time when demographics are changing and our neighbors' kids are increasingly black and brown. I want to make one thing clear. No other schools or teachers are better than our public schools and our public school teachers when it comes to providing equal opportunity to education. This is why I say our budget is a moral statement. So the mayor has sent the Board a letter outlining the financial uncertainty that we're facing, so I hope every Board member has had the opportunity to read it. And the city budget next year is level funded for all departments with no increases except for the school budget, which proposes a modest 1.5% increase as a cap. So I just want to thank you for listening. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Administration, to Dr. McKinney and Mr. Donovan, and I will ask for their presentation, and I'm going to ask Board members to hold questions and comments until after the presentation. Thank you for listening to me.
Hey, Mr. Guarino?
Yep.
Just quickly, can, for the minutes, can you read off the executive order sentence on the agenda, giving us permission to meet remotely for the minutes and also the participants from Administration for the minutes as well?
Um, I don't-
And then I'll get out of your way. Thank you.
I don't actually have that.
Oh, I'll say it. The National District, National School District is holding an emergency meeting pursuant to Executive Order 202004, Section 8, and Emergency Order 12, Section 3. That's it. That's the whole sentence. And then recognizing that we have people here from Administration.
Okay, so, um... Dr. McKinney, is Administration going to make a presentation? Is that the plan? Because that was on the agenda. That's actually the only item on our agenda, so...
Yes, we have a presentation ready. Ms. Cancelo, do you want to share your screen, or would you like me to do that?
I can do that for you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the NSD 2022 Budget Overview, and this is proposed by the District Leadership Team on February 17th, 2021. This is how we developed our budget. The District Leadership Team provided feedback on developing the budget. Then I met with Mr. Donovan, the Chief Operating Officer, finalized the budget, and we're here to present these recommendations here to the Board of Education. The budget was built around the following priorities: Maintaining current staffing programs and resources; Expanding special ed staffing to meet the diverse needs of our students; Continuing to address out-of-district tuition; Support safety and security; and this last one's important: Establish the district budget to build upon with state and federal funds, and we'll talk more about that through our budget presentations. There's some challenges, but there are also some opportunities: Responding to the needs of our students, whatever they might be, social, emotional, academic; Planning for the summer and expanding our summer programming. We're hearing from the state, there'll be virtual instruction available to kids, grants for learning loss, pod schools for kids in K-6, four to eight weeks, more assistance with comp ed funding. But also, what is the next school year going to look like? The ongoing technology challenges in terms of supporting our IT department, Chromebooks going one-to-one. Staffing, what does that look like moving forward? Do we continue to support some means of remote instruction? And do we hire additional staff to support the needs of our kids? I spoke of the social-emotional learning, and I also kind of alluded to the state and federal funding that's coming our way to support the operating budget moving forward. So I'd ask the Board to keep in mind, if you don't see things in this budget, it doesn't mean that it's not going to happen next year. We're going to have a number of other funding sources that can support things to meet the needs of our kids. I believe Mr. Donovan's going to speak to the next slide. Yeah, and that's the best you've sounded, but you're on mute, sir. Could you come off mute and...
That would help a lot.
I hate to say that to you, but go ahead.
Okay. Our district, Nashua at a glance, our district by the numbers, and as you all know, numbers are what make the world go round. So, some highlights. We have 18 schools. We have 12 elementary, three middle, two high school, and our alternative program, the Brentwood School. We hope to be closing on that building tomorrow. A long process, so hopefully we're there soon. Number of students. As of 10/1/2019, we had 11,025. A year later, 10,165. That's a very large drop in one year. That's a COVID-related drop. You will be receiving more information on that, an analysis of sort of why such a large drop in the next few weeks. We have 1,772 staff, plus another 71 or so that are grant-funded. We have 1,012 teachers, 952 in this budget and 60 in the grant funding. Our cost per student. Now, this is a calculation put together by the... It's a spreadsheet the city, I mean, excuse me, the state puts together. So the average cost per student using the parameters set forth by the state is $13,831. That's for last school year, school year that ended last summer. We have, as of October 2019, 41% of our students are free and reduced lunch. That number's much lower now because of the free lunch, but we expect that number to actually increase next year. We have 14% of our students are ELL, and we have 19% of our students are special education students. Next. Okay, this is my favorite slide because it's got real nice colors on it. Thank you to Derek for putting this together. But basically, a pie chart that shows the fiscal year '21 budget, and this is the full budget at the city level, versus the proposed fiscal year '22 expenses. Now, as you can see, labor and benefits in both of those are about 84%. So 84% just for benefits and labor. Then, when you look at the other significant expenses, utilities is about 2%, transportation about 5%, the out-of-district tuition, 3.6%. The next largest item, individual item on the budget, is the OTPT Student Support Services for special education students. That's less than 1%, and all the other expenses to run the district is about 4.1 or 4.43. So it goes to show you that if there were a need to make changes, I'm not suggesting there is this year, but that most of our expenses are in the labor and benefits. So that's really where we'd have to look forward. Next. Okay, this, just to highlight, is in millions. That's what that 000 means. These are the various sources of funding that we get to run our school district. So last year, the Board of Ed approved a budget of $114 million. That does not include the benefits. The benefits piece was added by the city, and that was another $41 million. Those two items are what we call our operating budget. We also have grants this school year that we're currently in of $14 million. The main three grants this year is the Title I Grant, which is about $4.7 million; the IDEA, which is the Special Education Grant, that's about $3.4 million; and in there is the $3 million of CARES Act funding that Dr. McKinney alluded to earlier. So we do have that $3 million. I included it all in this year, even though it stretches over more than one year. Bonded debt. This is something that's not part of our operating budget, but it's an actual cost. It's the cost that we, the planned cost that we would pay for principal and interest for this school year, and that's $9.5 million. Special revenue funds. Think of those as the Food Service Fund and the Drivers Ed Fund. Those are, revenue comes in to cover the cost. So the $6 million is really, if the budget was fully expended, we would spend $6 million, but we would also be bringing in $6 million. So it sort of nets itself out. The revenue to offset costs. What was in the budget for this year was $44 million. They come from various sources. The largest ones are the state education funding, which for this year is supposed to be about $37 million, I believe. There's Medicare funding of about $1.7 and the building aid of about $2.1. Included in here are some of the things like the parking and bus passes. It's not, that's not a large amount of money, combined about $120,000, but we will not be receiving those funds this year. And then, this year, as you probably recall, we received the SPSRF fund money. It was $2,156. It was, it wasn't in the form of a grant, but it came through, through the federal government. We spent that money during last calendar year. If you recall, most of it was spent on IT laptops and system upgrades, and the rest of it was spent on air purifiers, PPE filters for our HVAC system, et cetera. So that just gives you a total of where all the various funding comes from. Next. Okay, so each year, we sort of divine what the base budget was, because that's what we use to move forward each year into the next year. So, as we said earlier, the budget approved by the BOE last year, without benefits, was $114 million. The FICA piece is added, the FICA pension and benefits piece, which is significant, obviously. And the city makes some transfers out of contract reserves. Last year, that was $270,000. So the budget, the school budget in the city book, if you look at the city budget book, you'll see the school budget, school operating budget is $155,853 million. Next, please. So this year, what we are rolling out to the Board of Education is a proposed budget of $116,561,000. That is 1.957 over last year's base budget. That's a 1.71%. Now, as Mr. Guarino mentioned, the mayor suggested a 1.5%. This budget that we're rolling forward is 1.71%. So it's slightly higher than what the mayor suggested. Next, please. Okay, so basically, when you look at that previous slide, the number, you break it out into two pieces. What's the labor piece of it, and what's the non-labor piece? So the labor piece, last year was 89.7. The labor piece in this proposed budget is 91.1. So the increase in the labor portion of our operating budget is 1.55%. This, this number, these numbers are 78% of the operating budget, not counting benefits. So once again, it's the biggest chunk by far. Next, please. Okay, so just sort of a breakout, which labor accounts are the increases? As you'd expect, most of the increases are budgeted in the wages, full and part-time, and salary increase, the salaries, the allowances for salary increases. That's $1.2 million increase over last year. The next line is longevity. Longevity, for the past two years, we have been under budget. It's a difficult number for us to get in the budget in a timely fashion. This year, by delaying the budget, the mayor sort of is delaying his process. We've pushed ours back a couple of weeks. In doing so, we were able to get a more accurate number of longevity. And so we budgeted what we spent this year on longevity, which is $570,000 versus last year's estimate of $385,000. So as you can see, we were fairly far off on our budget estimate last year. So this should bring us pretty much into line with next year. The pay, the severance and separation pay, we kept the same at $800,000. Those are the funds when people retire, they get a severance payment, or simply when people that have vacation leave the district, they have accrued vacation, they get that paid out. And you can see, as far as the other labor accounts, there's really not much difference at all. It's a net decrease of $7,000 or $8,000. Next, please. Okay, this is the other part of the operating budget that we have before you tonight, and these are the non-labor costs. So last year, it was $24.8 million. This year, it's 25 points rounded off to four, an increase of $565,000. Percentage-wise, that's a 2.28% increase, but that is 22% of the budget, whereas the labor was the 78%. Next. Okay, so when you get your budget books, which I believe you will be getting later next week, you might have some information, but we'll be giving you all the detailed budget formats and reports. If you were to look at one of the line, at one of the two-page report, which would show you specific line items comparing last year to this year, you'll see where some of these increases are. So I'll just sort of run through these. The transportation increase, that's $280,000. We have a contract with per student, that's 3.5% increase a year. The 280 is basically 3.5% a year. Pupil support services, I mentioned it earlier, that was at OTPT. We use outside services for that. We budgeted another $20,000 in that, because that goes up every year. Tuition out of district, thing I've been harping on for many years. As I think I mentioned at the last Finance and Ops, it looks like, for the first time in three years, it's probably going to be down a little based on fewer students that might have something to do with the pandemic. Don't honestly know. But by adding $100,000 to the budget this year, it gets us to where I expect to be at the end of the year. It may not be enough for '22, but it's a step in the right direction. The subscriptions. This is really not that big an increase, because really what it is, it's within the curriculum budget. They moved items from one line item to another. So for example, the $125,000 this year has a number of subscriptions. It was placed in the subscription line as opposed to another line last year. And you'll see more of that as we move on. Computer equipment. That's what I would call an artificial increase. And the reason for that is, in fiscal year '21, we reduced our computer equipment budget by $120,000. We then had those one-time funds, and we gave back, actually, more than $120,000 of the one-time funds to the computer equipment and IT. So really, what they had run in fiscal year '20 was closer to this $546,000. But it is an increase from one year to the next on that specific line item. Computer software is up about $60,000. Most of that is, well, about half of that is simply increases in software costs each year. That's how software companies make their money. And the other is, we purchased an online registration software, which is $35,000 of that $59,000. Now, the expense transfers, that's basically two items. You'll notice they're negative numbers. These are, these are items which reduce our budget. They're mainly two things. One of the sports fees that we collect from our students, and the other is the facility rental fees. So those two items are put into our budget as negatives, because that's revenue that comes in to reduce our operating expenses. It's less, it's budgeted less for fiscal year '22. The sports fees are $25,000 less than they were last year, and Lisa Jingeris will give you a detailed explanation of that when she presents in a couple of weeks. And the facility rental, we're not doing any of that this year. I'm not sure when we're going to start doing that. When will be the decision that we decide to have renters come in and use? So I reduced that number by $40,000 in this year's budget. If we were to start the year off in September, the school year, we might be able to get the $140,000. But at this point, I thought it would be a conservative move, since we don't know when we're going to actually be renting out the space. So that's the reason for that decrease. Next slide, please. Okay, so on the other side of the fence, what are the, what are the significant reductions? Which line items have a significant reduction? There's a contracted service line. That's lower by $96,000, mainly for two reasons. One was last year, IT had a server network upgrade in their budget as a contracted service. That was completed. They didn't need it, so it's $45,000 less. The other $50,000 is basically special education. We had budgeted a person as a contracted service, because we couldn't find them and hire them. And this year, we budgeted that person as a hire. So basically, the difference, we just moved this cost out of contracted services onto the payroll line. The next, the HVAC maintenance, the Plan Operations Budget. For the last three years, we had an upgrade to one of our HVAC systems. I believe it was at Nashua North, and that upgrade is complete. That was paid for over three-year periods, so thus the savings on that line. Testing materials. Last year, the 126 had the iReady module that we were using. We have switched to another module. That module is budgeted in the subscriptions line that I talked about on the previous slide, not here. So the difference on this line is $70,000, but really, it's a transfer between testing materials and subscriptions. And the book line is $213,000 less. Last year, in that $360,000 or so, we had a budget, $185,000 of that was for elementary literacy books. We did make that purchase. In this year's budget, there's, there's not that one large book order. There are still some books that need to be purchased, but I think it also shows that we're moving more away from hardcovers and more to maybe electronic learning devices. Next. Okay, so, as I mentioned before, hopefully, we're closing on the Brentwood program building, 55 Franklin Street, tomorrow. When we put this, put this together, we made our first payment this year. We used grant funds, and we used some savings in transportation to pay for the first year. The next two years, we promised the installment plan to pay $250,000, and I made the statement that we wouldn't increase our budget. So this sort of shows you that, that the rental decrease, which is what we were paying for the facility on Amherst Street for Brentwood, that's a savings of $160,000. And then the heating fuel, we're able to reduce it based on an analysis we've done by $90,000. So basically, the purchase, the installment payment for the next two years should not increase our budget at all for that facility. Next. Okay, so in the budget, there's lots of, there's not lots of new things here. Just a couple of the new things. As I mentioned before, we did increase our tuition out of district by $100,000 to get it to where we think it's going to end up this year. And the security, we put in, we had a bond of about $2 million. I think it was about nine years ago now, to put a lot of security in our schools. We've been adding to that by putting in the new vestibules, putting in more cameras, things like that. But with that, it's technology, and technology over the years will break down. So Mr. Smith requested a higher number than this, but this is a start. And it's a new line item in our budget, which is basically security supplies less equipment, so that he can continue to keep up our current secure, level of security at the district. Next. Okay, additional resources for staff. It's a small list this year. One item, this came from Marsha Bagley, the Special Ed Director. That's for a Board-certified behavior analyst. It's really needed for the number of, we only have two in-house. This would make it three. The number of students they're serving, those two are serving, is just too much for them to handle. This would bring down the per-student ratio to a more manageable level. The custodians for Brentwood. If we're going to own the facility, we have to have custodians in there for security, as well as cleanliness reasons. So we would be adding a head custodian and a regular custodian. That would be $83,000 based on the current contract. And those are the only two staff positions. The other two items here are more stipends. One is, special education has a head teacher at Elm Street. They haven't had a head teacher at the other two middle schools. This is something that the Special Ed Director's been asking for for a while, so we put it in. As you can see, it's not a significant amount. And the other one is, we have a mu- And the other one is, we have a music program, which is an after-school music program. Some of the teachers are adjunct people. And I think there's a few that are actually music teachers in the district. They've had the same $64,000 amount for, I think, 10 years to run that program. From what I, I know of it, not being very musically inclined, but I hear it's very successful. And this is a way to allow them to either pay a little more per hour for that or to add weeks to their program. So we'll put this in the budget, assuming it stays there. We'll then work with the people that run the program and they can either add weeks or, or change the, the hourly rate. Next. So this is just a summary. Basically, what was the main increase? Cost increase, just to keep current level of services is 280. That's the transportation contract. The non-labor costs, two slides ago, equals 115. And the additional personnel and stipends we just mentioned is 173. So it's 569 of an increase. And the final slide is, just shows what the increases have been over the last five years and what the request is here. So you can see what the initial request was and then what the actual final number that was approved by the Board of Alderman. Now, keep in mind, those were just the percentages increase in our operating budget. We did receive one-time funds the last two years. That's not included in those percentages. And as we move forward in the budget, you'll, you'll, you'll also find out we have received money from the federal government, CARES Act money. We've received one set of money, we're going to be receiving more. When we know more about it, we'll certainly be sharing it with everyone. We don't really have a lot of the details on it, but it will be a significant sum of money. So when we're talking about a lot of the issues that we may have with students coming back and falling behind and things like that, you know, I'll leave it up to the educational people to create programs, but there should be funding for a lot of those things for the next, hopefully, two years. And that's all I have. Dr. McKinney, you have anything you'd like to wrap up?
No, that's it. Happy to take questions.
Hey, if anybody would have any questions or comments. I can see everyone. Go ahead, I see Ms. Johnson and, and then Ms. Zim. Ms. Odin, if you, if you want to, let me know if you want to also make a comment or question because I can't really see you. So I'm going to give the floor to Ms. Johnson and then Ms. Zim.
Thank you very much, Mr. Guarino. Thank you for the presentation tonight. I greatly appreciate it. Mr. Donovan, are we going to get all this papers on this beginning presentation in this week's package? Is that what your plan is?
Yes, you'll be getting it. Tara, is it going to go out this week or next week?
Well, I don't have a board run going out on Friday because we have no meetings next week.
Oh, that's.
But I will certainly have it copied and ready for the following week. Or you can pick it up or we can see what we can do to get it to you.
Okay, because it was kind of a little bit hard to follow. It's amazing, we don't have any meetings next week. Don't say it too loud because something's going to pop up like always.
I thought the same thing.
You know Murphy's Law here. On the, Mr. Donovan, on the contractor services that we moved to payroll line, that is exactly, how much is the salary going to be right now?
That was a position we had budgeted, I believe it was about $50,000. So the original plan was to hire a person. We couldn't find a person. So we had to move the money from payroll into contracted services to cover the cost of the contracted person. Now, the hope is that we can put it back into payroll and hire the person on staff full-time.
And so this is full-time position. And with this position, the benefits are gonna, we're gonna be paying benefits also on this too?
Yes, yes, that would be correct.
But there were no benefits on the contractor then, right?
No, but the, the cost per day of a contracted person is significantly higher.
Yeah.
So basically, we had to make do with fewer hours or days.
Okay, I think that's it for right now. Till I get the paperwork, then I can dissect it a little bit better. Thank you very much. Thank you for all the time everybody put into this budget. I'm glad I didn't have to do it. Glad, I will go through it line by line like I always do. Thank you.
Ms. Zim, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you. I was, I would, I would like to have a little more discussion on the fact that we lost so many students. And so does that mean that, that we are planning that they're going to come back? And so we're not subtracting from the number of teachers or? I don't, I'm just asking myself whether wrongly or rightly so, if we lost, if we lost that many students, then doesn't that mean we can reduce our staff? But I'm sure that's a much more complex answer than it appears from the surface. So I'm wondering if you can expand on that or maybe Dr. McKinney.
Sure, again, you'll be getting more information in your budget binders. But just looking at the, the numbers, there's a 46 student difference between last year to this year that went to private schools. We do, we did see an increase in homeschool applications. But anecdotally going to hybrid, we have seen some of those rescinded and kids coming back into the district. We also have 179 new kindergarten students registered as to date. So that is promising. They're coming back in a different way than learning the online registration system. So right now, we're not looking to reduce staff. Want to be able to have the capacity to meet the kids' needs, maybe new in different ways. So we're not there yet. But anecdotally, from student services, we are getting inquiries around students coming back into the district. And I certainly think the next couple of months, sharing with the public what the fall's going to look like, what summer programming is going to look like, we're going to have to give constant updates on those enrollment numbers.
Does, does the 46 that you're talking about, does that include the high school, the middle school? Because that seemed like a different figure from what I saw on the screen, but I might have, I might not absorbed it correctly.
So a 40, increased in 46 students going to private schools. Just the private schools here that we know about, including the New York High School.
So we only lost 46? I thought it was more than that. Okay.
160.
Yeah, thank you. It, it, see that.
So.
Yeah, maybe you can get back to me on that when you have a chance to look at it because it seemed like he was saying a much higher number, more like the one Paula just mentioned.
860 students. So it's going.
I think we have to take into account that the, the Nashua Early Education Program, the preschool, when you're saying we lost the students, we didn't have the typical peers come into the school. So they're not in our enrollment, they're still in the community. They just weren't coming in and receiving services. And that is a pretty popular program that fills up just about every year. So if those students, go ahead.
Well, it seems like when you're, when you're looking at losses, this year was catastrophic because of the circumstances of this year. But hopefully, it's hard to know that they won't come back, is it not? Or is that me? Because I would, I would think, I would think that when, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just wondering how you look at that. Do you think we'll get some of those back or no way of knowing, is there?
It's hard. We're relying on the public to register their kids to come back. But I do think they are coming back. A lot of kindergarten families decided to stay and not enroll because of the programs we're offering. I do think they will end up coming back and I'm happy to report that. I'm optimistic that if we can forecast what this summer's going to look like in the fall, I do think people will return, coming back to the school district and being part of it because we just offer so many different things for our kids. So I do think, you know, we can better define that number that's been shared before and regularly communicate the increase in enrollment of kids coming back into the district.
Thank you. I, I appreciate more than I can say, your regular updates, they've been wonderful. That's a winner. So thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Zim.
Thank, thank you. Does anyone else have any comments or, or questions? Ms. Odin, do you, do you want, want the floor?
All I can say is, even if we do have fewer students, I would not want to cut staff. I think next year will be an important year for those students that have missed things this year to have smaller class size if possible to make sure they get a little bit more attention and see if we can catch some of those kids up. So I, I know cutting staff saves money, but next year will not. I don't believe will be the time to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Go, go ahead, Ms. Zim.
Well, can I just like to say, I hadn't thought of that. It's not unusual for Mrs. Odin to remind me of those important little things, like how well are we servicing the ones we have? So thank you, Mrs. Odin, for your usual meaningful remark. Yes, you're absolutely on target. There's, there are, some of our kids have fallen behind and we'll need extra, extra care if we can give it to them. So that would be nice. Thank you.
Also, remember as, over the next couple of years, we're going to be completing the middle school projects. And I, I think a lot of people who have kids in elementary school and middle school are going to be looking forward to having their kids attend those schools. We're, we're all looking forward to getting back to normalcy. I, I know I am with the vaccines coming out now. And it's just taking a lot of time. It's, it's just time, a matter of time. And I think people will get back to, hopefully, a normal routine.
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Guarino. And thank you, everybody who worked on the budget. Once again, I appreciate having the overview and then the schedule you've got over the next few weeks to get into the nitty-gritty details. So I'm looking forward to that. I have a, a couple of questions about enrollment to kind of piggyback off of Ms. Zim a little bit. I, I'm just curious if we can get a breakdown. And really, it's to satisfy my curiosity about how many students we lost because of the, the preschool program versus homeschooling versus people who we know went to the private schools versus we don't know where they went. Because I think it will help to plan. The other question I had is regarding summer school. I, I know you haven't released the summer school plan yet. Is that this year's budget or next year's budget? Is then, is that the current fiscal year or the one that we're?
Next year, summer, summer would be the beginning of the school year budget. So to be the one that we just presented would be this coming summer.
Okay. Because I'm wondering if we're going to need, to Ms. Odin's point, additional supports and services for kids to help them transition back into a classroom environment on a more consistent basis. I'm also wondering about the ABA therapist, the behavior analyst. I think it's brilliant and we need them. I'm just, I'm worried that it might not be enough. Like, well, we need additional psychologists as well. So I saw your hand, Dr. McKinney.
So two things. We have some great handouts coming in your budget binder, all around enrollment. Ms. Kinsella and Bernardo have been working on that and collecting all the information you're referring to.
Yay.
They do great job. And then to your other part, I think it's important, as I spoke to you earlier, the compliance piece that needs to be done between the operating budget and these CARES or ESAR funds that are supplemental, that can't supplant what's in our budget and we can build on them. And I do think those are an opportunity, both for us to create new things, summer programming, but also before and after-school tutoring, funding positions and personnel. Pretty much a lot of the things that we support now in our grants would be permissible in the second round of funds. So we have to kind of look at what are our priorities? What are the supports that we want to give to kids? And how do we know they're yielding results? So that's going to be kind of the work, March to June, not only building the summer, but then building the return to the fall. And then what are the supports? But those funds also last two years. So how can we sustain those to kind of fill in the gaps that kids might have and bring them up to where they could, could be and hopefully rise even further?
Okay, thank you. And then I suspect that we may still be masking and sanitizing come September. So I'm just curious if that is planned for the second round of COVID pandemic funding? Or if that's something that you're looking at the operating budget for?
We can use those funds for that. It can include cleaning supplies, anything HVAC, air filtration, additional positions. So there's a lot of flexibility in there, particularly the second round towards learning loss. But the first round, we have to kind of use that first before we move into the next round. So that would be something to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. McKinney. Ms. Ms. Zim, you'd like to?
I, I thought of one other thing that I had thought about. When you look at the cost per student at the first page that Mr. Donovan showed us, that was wonderful, by the way. Thank you so much. But having said that, it was like, I don't want to say it was like 13, $14,000 per student. I would like to know if they've ever, obviously, our special education students, our English language learner students, even the immigration population cost us more than the other, all the other students on an individual basis. I'm wondering if they ever break that up and, and give us a cost per student for special education, English language learner and the ELL anyway. And the reason for that is I think it's edifying for the public, for the parents to know. It sounds like so much money, but when you actually get into the nitty-gritty of it, it's not so much money. It, it's, it's often, as I've said many times, it's often a case of who we're going to cut. And so I think that it would be good for the parents. We used to have on the, we used to have a data sheet all about the, the city of our public school in Nashville. On the, it was actually on the website. I don't think it's there anymore, but it basically gave these kinds of, this kind of information. And in particular, the ones that I just mentioned, I think would be really nice to know. Thank you.
Yeah, the, the number was 13,831. And I, if you compare it to other school districts, or you compare it to the average, I think the average is in the 14,000s for New Hampshire, so we're under the average. Many of the other school districts are 15,000 to 20,000 dollars per year per student. And Mr. Donovan, I remember previous budgets, he gave us some costs with special ed and it, it's, it, it varies. It could be twice as much to, I don't, Mr. Mr. Donovan could tell you about that more, but it's, it is a lot more for special ed.
And then, go ahead.
The, the 13,000 number is a true average because it takes all the costs in the district, divides by the number of students. That's a true average. If, if you were to take, we don't go through and break it out by what's, what's a typical special ed student cost. That's kind of hard to do. We could take the out of district, divide that by the number of students and say the average out of district student costs you, let's say, 60,000. But trying to get all the costs surrounding ELL or, or special ed, that's rather difficult to do. It's not something we've done before.
You wouldn't have to do, all I'm asking you is, in this case, you gave the average of the whole student population. I'm saying just the average. I understand what you're saying about out of, out of district. Obviously, if a child has to live out of district, it's much more expensive than if they're, you know, getting services in a school. And so I would just like, I, for my, from my perspective, I want the parents to know, and I'm, I'm certainly not suggesting that I begrudge, every child deserves an education at the best we can give them. I, I believe that Mr. Mr. Guarino's statement that it's a moral budget. I, I think that's a, I believe I agree with that absolutely. It is a moral. And it's one that, that, it's very hard. It's a hard, heart-wrenching, not my favorite time of year. No, no offense to you, Mr. Donovan, you do a great job. But so you haven't walked on water yet, though. I'm looking for that any day. So I would just, I did it myself one year. And, and, you know, I may not have been as accurate as you would be, probably not. not, I would assume. But, but I just think it would be really interesting for, for our parents and the public to know. And to know, you know, that the forty percent that was promised us has never been delivered, not anywhere near delivered. And I think that it's an injustice to our, it, it goes to the lawsuit that's going on. I do not think that it's fair to our students, the way we, the way we fund it. But that's not something you control, is it? So I'll, I'll let you off the hook. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Muzim. Does anyone else have any comments or, or any other business they'd like to, there's nothing else on our agenda. So I want to thank Mr. Donovan, Dr. McKinney, and everyone from administration, Ms. Cincella, for their presentation. And if no one else has any other business or comments, we can, we can adjourn or, go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
Thank you. I just want to remind people to stick around for our special board of ed meeting immediately following this one. Do not log off. I need you.
Okay.
Mr. Donovan, if you don't mind sticking around for five more minutes too. Thank you.
Okay. So in that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry. Was that Ms. Bishop or?
It was Ms. Muzim and I.
Ms. Muzim, okay. Ms. Muzim, motion to adjourn and seconded by Ms. Raymond. Would you like to take the role, Ms. Bishop?
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Muzim?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Excellent.
So we are adjourned at six fifty-eight PM. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. It is six fifty-seven PM. And I would like to call to order the special board of education meeting. It is Wednesday, February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. We are meeting three minutes before our scheduled time. So hopefully people are still watching from the previous meeting. We are meeting electronically this evening pursuant to executive order twenty twenty oh four, section eight, and emergency order twelve, section three. Ms. Bishop, could you call the role, please?
I feel like we just adjourned. Ms. Bishop is here. Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Sorry, present.
Mr. Guarino?
Here.
Ms. Muzim?
Yeah.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
They're all here still.
Hi, thank you. We also have Ms. Cincella, Ms. O'Gara, Mr. Donovan, and Mr. Parker. Didn't I miss anybody? I don't think so. Okay, so this special board of education meeting was called because our next regular board of ed meeting is not until March eighth, which is a full two weeks away. And this particular issue is a little bit time critical. We would like to discuss approving a superintendent search organization. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Brown, who is the chair of our ad hoc superintendent search committee. Take it away, Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. So we met this week and actually the week before as well, and interviewed two very qualified consultant firms to help us with our superintendent search that is going to be coming up here that we are currently doing. We interviewed McPherson and Jacobson, and also BWP Superintendent Search Committee. We had, they were both very good presentations that are available. If you want to go research them a little bit on the ETV playing on a circuit there. We've narrowed down the search to, or we, I think we decided that we, the committee was recommending that we go with BWP. The representatives from those committees are Dr. Deborah Hill and Dr. Kathleen Williams will serve as our co-leads should we choose as a board to go with them. The organization has been in business, working as BWP for about fifteen years. They were a merger between three other larger, large firms, Harold W. Webb and Associates, PNR and Associates, and the Bickert Group. They are going to help us with a multi-stage project from making sure that we have our job descriptions placed in the right places. They do a fair amount of headhunting. They'll reach out to the stakeholders in the community and do some focus groups so that we can work on getting a good quality candidate and also the types of questions to ask for what's right for our district as opposed to something a little more general. They recently placed the candidate for the Portland, Maine superintendent, and we got some very good references to support their work there. And he's well-liked and doing a great job. That school district has some diverse demographics similar to ours and lots of, I think they, I think we looked up that they speak sixty-three different languages in the school district in Portland, Maine. So it has some of the similar challenges that we have facing our district right now. So if anybody would like to ask some questions, I would, I could make the motion and then we can bring the question to the floor if we would like to do that. So, okay.
Yes, go ahead, please, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. So I'd like to move that we hire BWP to consultant, consulting firm, to assist us with our superintendent search in the amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand six hundred dollars.
So moved. Okay, so the motion was by Ms. Brown, seconded by Ms. Timmons, to hire BWP, I'm paraphrasing, for an amount not to exceed, I'm sorry, twenty-four?
Twenty-four thousand six hundred dollars. But if I could speak to that amount for just one moment.
Sure. I, I just want to remind people that we all got the proposals back on February first. So you should have it in your, wherever you keep all of your papers that were sent to you. We've decided not to resend them because they're pretty long. So go ahead, Ms. Brown.
So the baseline cost for these services are actually going to be seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. The twenty-four thousand six hundred dollars is that, or not, that extra amount to exceed seventeen-five is typically associated with travel costs for the superintendent candidates to travel back and forth, or for committee members to travel to those districts. But probably due to the fact that the majority of this search will be done virtually until we get down to probably, I'm guessing, the last two to three candidates. It's probably, they, they estimate that these costs will be closer to the twenty thousand dollar mark than the twenty-four thousand dollar mark.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. For the record, I will volunteer to go anyplace sunny, if that is an option. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? I think Ms. Gilio mentioned to me in the chat. Oh, also, I need to note for the record that Ms. Hines arrived at seven o'clock on the dot because she's very prompt. So Ms. Gilio and then Ms. Muzim.
I want to thank the ad hoc committee because I know this was a lot of work. And I was able to watch your interviews with the two organizations last week. I recorded them and watched them after the fact. I do have a question. I thought earlier on, you had mentioned that the New Hampshire School Board Association might also be able to help us with the superintendent search. And then I did not hear any follow-up on that. Could you address that?
Sure. The most extensive proposals, they do offer some of the services that they have here. But their services are not quite as comprehensive as these companies. And to the best of my knowledge, it was my understanding that they don't go do headhunting type of activities, which I think is one of the really excellent things that both of these companies that we had narrowed it down to will go out and not only list our position, they will listen to the district, create these focus groups, and then they'll even go poll places regionally, nationwide, locally, to see what kind of candidates within their network can meet those specific qualifications. And actually, I was just trying to flip through here and find the list of other, of associations that they are associated with. Does anybody have that pulled up by any chance? They're very well connected with the profession, it was a professional organization of Latino superintendents, I believe. And does anybody, can anybody remember the list? It was like, and then, Ms. Cincella, what was the one that we used to present at?
You asked me, didn't you?
I, hold on, let me see if I can find it here.
I'm going to open a file.
So anyway, they are very, very well connected with many, both regional organizations and also national organizations. I'm sorry, I don't have the list in front of me, but I will be happy to follow up and get it for you if you'd like.
I, I still have my packet, so I'm sure it's in there. I did have an additional question. I'm, I'm sure that you spoke with the people in Portland, Maine, and it sounds like they're happy. Can you tell me how long the superintendent has been with them?
I believe that search was in two, I think it's been maybe three years here. Let me double check. It is, that's also in this packet somewhere. And so I'll tell you how it worked. I got the, I did speak with the recommendation. And I should say also, the other company, both of these companies that we narrowed it down to came very highly recommended from the school boards that we spoke with locally. So one, the other one was, has worked with the Manchester School Board that hired their current superintendent, also came very highly recommended. And there were just a few nuanced things that edged one company out over the other for our final recommendation from the committee. So I will have to also follow up and see exactly how long their superintendent's been placed. But I spoke with a school board member who's been, who actually served on their school board for, I believe, twelve or fifteen years, who just recently moved off, but was integral with their superintendent search and has been, been there while they have had multiple superintendents circling through there. And she was just, couldn't say more enough about what a good fit the candidate was for their district specifically.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions that we can help with, or any of other board members that want to weigh in? Or ad hoc committee members? Go ahead, Muzim.
I'm sorry. I will be voting against this. And I, I, I'm making this statement only because I don't want my constituents to think that it was a decision I made without a searching of my conscience and trying to do what I think is best for the district. I guess when I looked at the nuances that Mrs. Brown was speaking about that give one an edge over the other, the one that made the most difference to me was that the BWP that, that they are recommending, they were going to, she recommended, Dr. Hill recommended that we advertise it open-ended as far as the cost. In other words, how much we can pay. Sometimes you put a salary range, sometimes you put other, you know, commensurate with experience or to be determined, nebulous, if you will. And in the past, when I had been in these superintendent searches, we, we had it both ways. And I remember that one time, we had a candidate that we all fell in love with. And it turns out that there was no way we ever could afford to pay for him because he ended up getting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is considerably above the price range that we are in. And the McPherson and, I keep trying to remember the names, right? I don't want to do anybody an injustice. McPherson and Jacobson, he clearly said that he would put a price range in, that he felt a price range told people whether, I mean, if you're already making two hundred and we can't pay two hundred, why would you even apply? And so I thought that, that that was, that was one big show of, of a choice that I, a decision that I could not agree with. They were also, McPherson and Jacobson are a larger company and they have been in business thirty years. And I am prejudiced, I have to say, in that I did the research on the recommendation for the Manchester School District. And I, I thought that they were clearly saying to me that, that they were, he actually said to me, don't, don't, don't talk to anybody else but the man that we interviewed on TV because he was so good that they, they had formed an emotional attachment to him because he was so, so direct and so conscientious. And so I, you know, I, I guess that I just want my people to know that I respect everybody's right to disagree. That's what makes my country great. So I, I don't have a problem with that truly. I don't. But at the same time, I want everybody to know that I, I vote my conscience. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Muzim. Ms. Oden?
Thank you. I watched the presentations twice. I would have liked to have gone, but under what the New Hampshire School Boards Association said, I decided not to. I thought the Jacobson, the McPherson and Jacobson representative, Dr. John Grotto, was extremely strong. I, I was very impressed with him. I liked the fact that he offered some ways that we might be able to save some money bringing candidates here using the Chamber of Commerce. He, he offered that. As Ms. Muzim said, I agree with her. He had thirty years' experience. And I like the fact, I, I believe he said eighty percent of the people they placed were still in the position five years after they were hired, and fifty percent were still in the position past ten years. And I think that speaks highly to their ability to make a good fit. I think we've seen the Manchester superintendent long enough that he's done very well there. And unfortunately, I had the brochures. I put them someplace safe and I can't find them. But I noticed that they, the, the BWR group, is that what it is? BWP? They had a cost of three thousand dollars for advertising and fifteen hundred dollars to do a background check. Now, is that included in the twenty-four six, or was that an extra to a seventeen thousand six hundred figure?
That's included. The twenty-four six is the maximum cost, including travel, et cetera.
And what was the, the total price of the McPherson?
I think it was twenty, twenty-three, twenty?
Nineteen thousand and some odd.
So they were, they were about five thousand dollars cheaper?
If we, if we took all the options.
The, so if, I'm sorry, Ms. Raymond, may I interrupt?
Yes, go.
So the, the fee for the McPherson and Jacobson was sixteen thousand nine hundred dollars, not to exceed twenty thousand one hundred dollars.
I, I just, I look at the figures, I look at the numbers, and I think there's much more value in, in the McPherson Jacobson. I, I just thought that man was outstanding. I thought he gave lots of information. I thought he was helpful. And as I said, we And as I said, we can look at Manchester and see what a great job they've done. I was impressed by Dr. Grotto's answer when we asked, when, I don't remember who asked it, but they asked about background check. And he said, "We just don't call the references that the candidate has given. We ask those people for other names so we can call other people." And I know in the government, when they have important jobs, that's what they do, often in the military, too. You know that whoever you call for a reference is usually going to give you a good reference. And I think going a little bit deeper, I think that's very savvy and the right thing to do. So I thought, I thought the Dr. Grotto's group was a better value. It was cheaper, and I thought it was more thorough, and it sounded like they had more experience. So I will, I will not be voting for the BWR group, BWR, forgot the letters, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Odin. Next, I have Ms. Timmons.
Thank you. I will be voting for them because, one, I thought they had a better presentation, they cast a larger net, they were more thorough, and I believe that they will give us the biggest bang for our buck. We also did a lot of research on both of the consultants, but BWP came out a little bit higher than the Jacobson and McPherson. And it's for a lot of reasons. And we would have to go back through those slides, which I was trying to find, I can't find them. But we would have to go back through the slides. In my opinion, we'd get the biggest bang for our buck if we went with BWP. And that's cost, that's efficiency, that is, they've been around since 1977, they incorporated several other consultant firms, so they just didn't start in a vacuum. They've been around a long time as well. So I would be supporting them.
I do have the presentation from BWPI on my, pulled up on my computer. If people would like me to share my screen and go to particular slides that they had questions about.
Awesome. There was one thing that Mrs., words are flying out of my head for some reason lately, but Jessica did say, and as we put up, you know, the two side by side, if we have that chart, if you still have that, Jessica, it really would be wonderful to show why one came out ahead of the other.
All right, hold on, that'll take me just a minute, hold on.
I think, oh, go ahead, Ms. O'Gara.
So I don't know if I get to contribute, but I like BWP because if you look at the director list, they're all retired superintendents. Wow. We have people who are selecting that know what the job is and what it entails. And also, I thought that I, from the brochure, they have a lot of resources to find superintendents across the country. And that's the most difficult thing that we have in front of us, to have a good selection of candidates across the country. That's just my two cents.
Thank you, Ms. O'Gara. I don't see any other hands, so I'll talk. For me, I thought they both had excellent presentations. I would have, I'm happy with Dr. Grotto, I thought he did a great job. I appreciated the information that Ms. Zim got from Manchester. However, I liked some of the extra services that BWP includes. So they have a 94% retention rate for superintendents that they place, and 95% of the superintendents that they have placed were offered a second contract. And so I, to me, that sounded good, the idea that we could have somebody who might stay a while. The other thing that I liked about them was the comparison between us and Portland, Maine. I think Portland, Maine is very similar to us, just like Manchester. I apologize, there are people and dogs in my house. I lost my train of thought. And I liked that about them, but I especially liked the Portland, Maine comparison because of the number of languages spoken. The diversity actually in Portland is higher than it is here. And I liked the number of resources that they were able to pull on. And I just felt like that gave them the edge. They also offer mentoring for their candidates for the first year as part of the package that we would be getting, which I think is helpful. It can be difficult to transition to New Hampshire, it can be difficult to deal with our board. And that was true before I was on the board, it will be true after I'm off the board. It's not just, you know, me personally that makes things difficult, it's the nature of boards in New Hampshire. Manchester is similar in that we're dramatic. So I think having that resource is extremely valuable. So that's all I have. Anybody else? Nope, okay. All right, I don't see any other hands. So if we are ready, then let's go ahead and take the roll and see where we're at. So the motion is to approve the contract with BWP not to exceed $24,600.
So Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio? Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
No.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Carino?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
No.
Ms. Timmons? Five yeses, and one, two, three, and four noes. The yeses have it.
So BWP will start with a very good idea of how dramatic boards in New Hampshire can be, and I think that's good. I think disagreement and discussion is healthy for us. So Ms. Brown will contact BWP or Ms. O'Gara? What did we decide?
I think we decided that I will give both companies a call tomorrow. I'm going to put them in touch actually with Mr. Donovan and Ms. O'Gara and Ms. Hines. I'll probably be their primary point of contact for setting up the focus groups or whatever, but Dan and Dana are going to work on getting a contract finalized before we spend any money.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Zim?
It just occurred to me, was somebody going to ask them if they will divide the payment into two years, that the way Mr. Donovan mentioned in our conversations yesterday, because I think that's pretty important.
Yes.
So, and I do think that that was, they do have that in their proposal, that it's, you give one half of the payment at the beginning and then half the payment after the search has been completed, which will probably end us up in the next fiscal year, probably. So.
Well, I don't think so. I think you should discuss that with Mr. Donovan and make sure, because I wouldn't want us to get into an embarrassing situation.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
If there's, if there is an issue with the contract, if there are details that Mr. Donovan doesn't like or feels that aren't in our best interest, same with Ms. O'Gara or Ms. Hines, or if Legal has a problem with it, we will return to the board. Because we will not go forward with something that is not appropriate for the district. So hopefully that won't happen. But rest assured, we won't get to a point of signing something that Mr. Donovan or Ms. O'Gara or Ms. Hines or Legal says we shouldn't. Is that acceptable to everyone? Yes, okay. Hopefully that won't happen because I would really like to not have a meeting next week. We can be available if we need to. All right, so that is all I have for the special meeting this evening. We have the Joint Special Building, Joint Special School Building Committee meeting tomorrow night at 7:00. And that is all I've got. So I'm willing to entertain a motion to adjourn if there's no other business.
Can I ask, Ms. Raymond? I know I had some concerns about the written job description that we had, and I haven't seen a final copy. Can we get a final copy on that?
Yes. Everyone is nodding yes. I don't know if you can see them, Ms. Odin, but it looks like both Ms. O'Gara and, I'm sorry, and Ms. Hines and Ms. Kinsella are all nodding yes. So will that be emailed to us like before the end of the week? Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And then, once the contract's finalized, BWP will start with working with Ms. Hines on a brochure and getting stuff posted, and working with us and the community to set up focus groups. So we'll hit the ground running. So thank you all very much for staying tonight because I didn't want this to wait until March to figure out. Okay, motion to adjourn, someone?
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Johnson? I'll second it.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Timmons.
Are we going with Timmons or Raymond?
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, go with Ms. Timmons.
Well, I already wrote down Raymond.
All right, go with Ms. Raymond.
Fine.
Okay, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Carino?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
And Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Thank you, Mr. Donovan, for staying. I really appreciate it. I know it's been a long day for all of our administrators, so thank you very much.
Good night.